December 10th, 2025, meeting of the Tana Sabaigo Board of Appeals. All five members are here, so we have a quorum. First, order of business is review of the minutes. Has everybody reviewed the minute?
I'll make a motion, the October 29th, 25 minutes are good.
Second, I will.
No, no, I was saying, do we have a second?
You can have the second one.
Okay, all in favor? Old Business Rockcraft LLC, administrative appeal of the code enforcement officers, August 27th, 2025, notice of violation. Testimony and presentation of materials, the appellant will go first.
Okay. Well, thanks very much. Good to see everyone again. I'm Joe Savissey, I'm attorney at Perkins Thompson in Portland, and I'm here with Rockcraft LLC and its sole members Larry Marks and Karen Marks, seated here with me. We're here tonight because of the August 27th, 2025 notice of violation that was issued by the CEO. I believe the board is familiar with the background and with the property itself, having discussed this at the board's on the CEO's October 29th meeting. But just a brief background, I'm going to open with some remarks of my own, and then I'm going to turn it over to Karen and Larry, who would also like to speak. But by way of background, so the property, just to reorient the board, is located at 9 Rockcraft Road. It is the only property accessed by that road, and it lies between Route 114 and Sabaigo Lake. It's a 9.6 acre property, 850 feet of frontage on the lake. It's located in the Village zoning district, and a portion of the property is also within the Shoreland district. The focus of tonight's meeting, though, was purely under the land use ordinance. On October 29th, the board determined that it only had jurisdiction to hear one of the issues in the NOB, and that is whether the Marksens are operating what the town calls an illegal commercial wedding business on the property in violation of the town's land use ordinance, or LWO. We believe the answer to that question is clearly no, and the CEO had no basis to issue this as part of the NOB. And I want to, I know the board has received a lot of materials from us, from the CEO, the CEO's attorney. I assume the board has reviewed those, so I don't want to be repetitive here, but instead I wanted to sort of highlight a couple of salient points that I think are relevant to the board's deliberations tonight. And the first is a case, a recent case from the Maine Supreme Judicial Court, lawyers would call it the law court, that's Maine's highest court. A recent decision from that court bears pretty directly on this appeal. And the name of that case is 15 Langsford Owner LLC versus the Town of Kenabunkport. So the town, in that case, the town of Kenabunkport was represented by the same law firm as the town of Sabaigo. And the facts of the case are as follows. So between December 2020 and June 2021, the plaintiff in that case, 15 Langsford, acquired 11 condominium units in the town of Kenabunkport. And the spring of '21, 15 Langsford began renting the units exclusively for occupancy for periods of less than 30 consecutive days, so it's a short-term rental. At the time, the town did not have a short-term rental ordinance. The units were offered for rent on the website of 15 Langsford's parent company, which managed and operated the units and other resort properties in Kenabunkport. The parent, and this is all coming from that decision, I'm quoting heavily from that decision. The parent company's website, which describes the parent company as offering, quote, "The best inns, resorts, and hotels in Kenabunkport," acts as a booking platform for 15 Langsford's units and the parent company's other properties. In addition to using a shared platform to book reservations at the units, short-term rental guests at the units receive access to amenities offered by the parent company at its other properties. So the town took an issue with this, and explained to 15 Langsford in May of 2021 that it viewed the rentals as part of a larger commercial hospitality enterprise, operating without planning board approval required by the planning ordinance. So the following month, the town enacted a short-term rental ordinance. Under the short-term rental ordinance, legally existing residential dwelling units may be used as short-term rentals if you get a short-term rental license from the town. But certain lodging establishment uses, including uses for hotels and inns, are not eligible for those licenses. So in light of the new short-term rental ordinance, 15 Langsford applied for licenses for all of its 11 units. And the CEO denied those applications and issued written denial stating that the town's position that 15 Langsford had operated, advertised, and managed the units as a commercial lodging establishment, in other words, an inn, under unified management control and or ownership of a hospitality business, without planning board approval and violation of town ordinances. So 15 Langsford appealed that decision to the Superior Court, and they won. The Superior Court concluded that the CEO erred as a matter of law by determining that the units rented by 15 Langsford were not legally existing residential dwelling units within the meaning of the short-term rental ordinance. So the town didn't like that decision and appealed it to the law court. On appeal, the town argued that the units were not residential dwelling units because 15 Langsford is owned by an entity that manages resort properties, that the units were advertised in concert with those resort properties, and that guests renting the units received access to the resort properties. The town also relied on another case called Morgan versus Townsend, which is the town's sites and their materials to this board, and I can explain that case later. But the law court rejected all of the town's arguments. They agreed with the Superior Court. The law court noted the definition of a dwelling unit under the short-term rental ordinance is "one or more rooms arranged for complete independent housekeeping purposes with space for living and sleeping, space for facilities for eating or cooking, and provisions for sanitation." The law court further noted that each of 15 Langsford's units contains a living space, a kitchen, at least one bedroom, and at least one bathroom. They are plainly more than guest rooms and are arranged and attended for complete independent housekeeping purposes by you for residential occupancy. So that's what the town, excuse me, that's what the law court found in the town's Kenabunkport case. You had a, and I think the case is instructive for tonight's deliberations, and I'll tell you why. I want to get into the town's arguments as to why Karen and Larry's use of their property is an illegal wedding business. First, the town argues that Rockcraft has configured the property for non-residential use. And Karen and Larry can explain this in more detail, but what the town describes as extensive infrastructure on the property installed by the Marksens was in fact already there when they bought the property and had been there for many, many years. The only thing that the Marksens have installed is 100 amp electrical service. I'm not an electrician, but I think 100 amp electrical service is typically the minimum of what you would see at a small residential dwelling. So second, the town argues that the property is being used commercially because it's advertised. And Karen and Larry can share with you more details about this. But the bigger picture is that, and this is Sabaigo, it's a lakefront community, there are many, many dozens of properties held out for rental and advertised on sites like VRBO, Airbnb, and the like. Many of these properties actually specifically advertise that they are suitable for weddings and events. And furthermore, in that Kenabunkport case that I was talking about, there the property owner had a parent company that advertised the units on its website, describing it as offering "the best inns, resorts, and hotels in Kenabunkport." The law court found this irrelevant. The fact that the units were advertised did not defeat the residential nature of their use. I would argue the same applies here. Rockcraft Lodge was renovated to be restored as a single-family dwelling. There's a certificate of occupancy that the town issued that's in the materials that we submitted, and that's how Karen and Larry use the property. Third, the town argues that Rockcraft charges additional fees and offers particular packages for weddings. The town's relying on some inaccurate information here, and Karen and Larry can explain in greater detail as to why that information is inaccurate. I'm going to turn it over to Larry in a second. Fourth, the town argues that the size and frequency of events at the property make it an illegal commercial use. We disagree, and I think the town previously has disagreed as well. First of all, this information that the town gathered was voluntarily provided by the Marksens in an effort to negotiate a resolution for this issue. That information that the Marksens provided, you'll see, it's in the materials. We're talking about an average of three to five weddings per year. No secret, you know, from the town, the town knew that this was going on for many, many years, and in fact had expressly approved liquor licenses at least 11 times since 2019. And we were told that the town only keeps liquor license records for six years. So there may in fact have been more approvals granted prior to 2019, dating back all the way to 2015, when the Marksens started using the property this way. So for all of those reasons, we asked the board to reject the CEO's conclusion that the activities summarized violate the town's land use ordinance. The land use ordinance does not even define commercial use. At best, we think the ordinance is ambiguous. If the town really cared about this issue, they could have done any number of things to fix it. They could have adopted a short-term rental ordinance. It is not. The town could have amended the land use ordinance or its mass gathering ordinance to address circumstances like this. It hasn't done either of those things. The town could adopt an events ordinance. It hasn't done that either. Instead, what the town has done is chosen to exploit the ambiguity in the ordinance and use it to attack a particular landowner. We don't think that the selective enforcement of the ordinance is productive use of the town's resources. There are other solutions to this problem, but the town thinks it is a problem. So I'm going to close my remarks there, and I'm going to turn it over to Larry. Larry, thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks to the board for allowing you to come here tonight and to talk. Karen and I just wanted to take a little bit of time to respond to some of the points that the CEO and the town attorney submitted to you all. But before we do that, I just want to take a step back and restate a few things that might get lost in all the sort of legal back and forth. First, Rockcraft is our second home. We use it, we use it for vacation, we use it for family gatherings, we use it for events. We bought it from the church in 2011, and we spent over two years renovating it. And our goal was to restore Rockcraft to the way it was when the Spaldings owned it and lived there. And that turned out to be a lot more expensive than planned. So to defray the costs, we do the same thing that a lot of people do. We occasionally rent the property to third parties. And it's a big, beautiful property, and some of the people who rent it hold events there. We tell people who want to have events that it's completely do-it-yourself. They rent the property from else, from us, and everything else is on them. And we don't do any of the things that wedding businesses typically do. Wedding businesses organize themselves as a business. We didn't form a rental business. We report our rental income on our personal taxes. Wedding businesses usually have employees. We don't have any employees. The notice of violation talks about our staff, quote, unquote. Well, you're looking at our entire staff. It's Karen and me. Wedding businesses offer lots of wedding-related services. We don't offer any services. We don't provide catering. We don't rent tents. We don't rent tables. We don't rent linens. We don't rent silverware. We don't rent porta-potties. We don't book DJs or bands. We don't do wedding planning. We just rent the property. The couples who have weddings do everything else themselves. It's totally do-it-yourself. Finally, wedding businesses book as many events as they can, but we don't. Rockcraft is our second home. We plan to retire there in a couple of years, and we rent the property about 20% of the time to defray costs. We never defray all of the costs, but renting helps. And renters hold about three to five weddings a year on average. That's all we're talking about, three to five weddings a year on average. Now, at the town's request, we provided a list of the weddings that have been held at the property since 2015. And this took us some time to research, but we came up with a list and we provided it to the town. And we initially reported zero weddings in 2021, but in going back through our records, turns out there were actually three weddings at the property that year. That doesn't change the big picture of three to five weddings per year, but I want to acknowledge our mistake and correct it in public. So the town's arguments that we're a business at Rockcraft seem to come down to a few points, and Joe mentioned these. We made changes to the property so it could accommodate large weddings. We advertised the property, and we rented to people who want to hold weddings. They made a lot of assumptions in their statement without actually talking to us about them, so we want to address some of those points. Let's start with the changes that we made to the property. They say we've installed parking for a large number of cars. Well, there is plenty of room for cars to park, but Rockcraft is almost a 10-inch block, so it's not surprising there's a lot of space. We didn't have to do anything special to create space for parking. People just park on the lawn. They say we have outdoor electrical service, and we do, but it's not a very powerful system, and it wasn't put there just for the weddings. It's there for any guest, wedding or not, and it's there for us. We've used it ourselves quite a few times for family events. They say we've maintained a large, open lawn, which is a perfect place for a tent. We do have a lawn between the lodge and the lake, and the lawn is a perfect place for a tent, but it's not something we added or changed. The lawn was always there, and it looks exactly like it did 100 years ago when the Spaldings built Rockcraft. We just mow it from time to time. We didn't do anything special to put it there. And in case there is any doubt, I do have pictures here that show what it looks like today and what it looked like in the past. Okay? It's different. I have more pictures.
Are those pictures there exhibits to the notice of violation? Is that right? Those two were?
That's correct. These come from Exhibit A of the notice of violation. So these are pictures you already have. I just made them a little bigger. I do have some other historical photos that Dorothy Spalding's niece gave us that go, you know, black and whites that go back far, so I can provide those if folks want to see them. So pick the law. And I guess the last point I wanted to mention is the carriage house. They say, the town says we improved the carriage house for use as guest quarters, and that's just not true. The carriage house is a gathering area. It has a pool table, a TV, and an air hockey table, but there's no bedroom, and there's no guest quarters. The town says we're a business because we advertise Rockcraft, and we do advertise, just like everyone else who rents their property advertises. They point out that our website said Rockcraft is the, quote, "ideal venue to host your wedding, corporate retreat, or family reunion." We said that because we think it's true. It's a large, beautiful property by the lake, and it is ideal for events. They say we offer wedding planning services. We don't. They say we offer a bride's dressing area and a complimentary bridal suite. In fact, there are no special dressing areas. Rockcraft has bedrooms, and bathrooms, and a kitchen, and a dining room, and a living room, and several porches, but there are no special rooms dedicated to weddings. I couldn't understand why the town would say all those things until I noticed that on page 71 of Exhibit A of the notice of violation, there's a listing for a site called weddingspot.com. So I looked at that site, and there is a listing for Rockcraft that does say many of the things the town claims. The only problem is, it's not our listing. We haven't had any contact with weddingspot.com for over eight years. We never sought to advertise with them. We don't pay anything to that site, and we had no idea that they currently had a listing for us. So if any of you have planned a wedding recently, you probably know that there are other sites like weddingspot.com that publish information on their own. They decide on their own who they'll list and what they'll say about them. As I said, we have no knowledge we were on that site. We could have told the town that these sites were wrong, but they never asked us. The town says we're a business because we have wedding packages. I had trouble understanding this argument. Of course, we charge for a rental, and of course, the charge is going to vary based on how long our guests want to stay and whether it's the summer or the off-season. But regardless of what we charge, we always only rent the property. Weddings are always do-it-yourself. The town quotes the Sotheby's website as saying, quote, "There are additional costs associated with renting the property for a wedding event." That's true, and that actually proves our point. Weddings are always do-it-yourself, so renters have to pay extra for everything else. They don't pay us, but they have to pay others for all the costs of holding a wedding. So I want to mention two more things the town said, because I think they illustrate how unfair this has been. First, the town says we refuse to provide them information that they think will confirm to all of you that Rockcraft is a business. Now, we received the town's letter from our attorney at 4:15 PM by email on Friday, November 21, 2025. That's the Friday before Thanksgiving, and they asked us to provide the information by last Tuesday, December 2nd. So if you don't count Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving, that's five business days. And what did they ask for? Look, you can see, you know, in the materials, that they asked for a wide range of records dating back 10 years. The town took months to respond to our formal request, which covered less than five years. But they're saying that we're somehow hiding something because we didn't provide over 10 years of records in five business days. But beyond that, I have to ask, if this information was really needed to determine whether or not we're a business, why is the town asking for it months after it decided we're a business and issued a notice of violation? Why didn't they ask these questions before they decided we're a business? The second thing is that the town says that the fact that we stopped holding weddings somehow proves we're a business. It's true that we canceled future weddings, and we refunded rental fees, and we removed any mention of weddings from our own website. But we did that because the town issued a notice of violation and gave us 48 hours, just two days, to stop the weddings. We strongly disagree that this is commercial activity, and we're appealing it here, and we're appealing it in court, but in the meantime, we're complying with the notice of violation. The notice of violation says mandatory fines approved on a daily basis of up to $5,000 per violation. And it also says, if the economic benefit resulting from the violation exceeds the applicable penalties, the fine can be increased up to twice the amount of the economic benefit resulting from the violation. Is there anyone here who wouldn't pause temporarily if you got a notice of violation?
I don't mean, if I can interrupt you briefly, just on a procedural point. Mr. Chair, it's ultimately your call that I would just caution the testimony and arguments from getting into fines and that sort of thing, that that's really something that would be dealt with by the court, and it's not appropriate, in my opinion, for this board to consider fines. In response, Stephen, what I would say is that the town is characterizing the Marksens' compliance with the NOB as some, as tradition of some sort. What they're saying is, it is not. Right, and I think that's entirely appropriate to discuss. Yeah, I just wasn't quite sure where you were going with that.
That's all I had to say. I just wanted to say those fines were part of the reason that we stopped. But also, we want to comply with rules. So we've been very transparent, and we've tried very hard to be collaborative, but we don't think the town has taken the same approach toward us. Information that we voluntarily provided to the town was used against us in the notice of violation. And on top of that, the town also asked us to provide 10 years of additional records within five business days. And they're now saying in their submission to you that you should draw an adverse inference because we didn't produce additional information that they thought would help their case. Now, over the course of August, we were told repeatedly by the town that we couldn't resolve the wedding issue unless we also came to terms with them on the boathouse renovation. And they told us if we agreed to their terms on the boathouse, they'd allow the weddings that were scheduled to proceed. Now, these are two separate issues, two completely separate sets of circumstances. So I have to ask, what legitimate reason could the town have for tying these together? Threatening weddings at the last minute certainly put a lot of pressure on Karen and me, but I can't think of a good reason why we should have to settle the boathouse dispute to avoid ruining completely unrelated weddings. You know, as Joe said, I think the reality is that the town is trying to police how and what residents choose to do on their own property, and that should concern us all. If the town wants to classify special events like weddings that occur on private residential property as commercial activity, then it's the responsibility of the select board to amend the ordinances to do just that. But until that happens, the town shouldn't be using its enforcement powers to make an example out of residents who've done everything it asked of them over the past decade just because we happen to have a property that's large enough to allow these events. So I'm sorry I've gone on so long, but this is really the first time we've been allowed to tell our story in public. And I'm going to turn it over to Karen, who has just a few more things to say.
I will be a lot preferred to highlight some of the points that have been discussed. One of the things I have a hard time getting my head around is the fact that, as I'm sure you all know, for almost 70 years, there have been weddings at Rockcraft Lodge. In fact, I bet there's at least one person in this room that either got married there, or their mother got married, or their sister, or their neighbor. It's a source of pride for the town, and we've been thrilled to be able to renovate the property and continue that tradition. I also want to make a point that hasn't really been discussed all that much. Well, we've addressed it a little bit, but the fact that there have been so many liquor permits that were approved by the town for years, and the town hasn't really explained to us why they approved all those liquor permits. They clearly, or I don't want to speak for the town, but it was They clearly, or I don't want to speak for the town, but it would appear to me that they didn't have an issue with weddings. They certainly never complained to us. They never addressed it with us. We never had complaints from neighbors. Rather, people would say how much they loved the fact that Rockcraft was renovated and that people were able to enjoy the property. The first time I think that the idea of whether or not it was commercial property or whether it was an allowed use, I think, was when I met with Christina in, I think it was May twenty-twenty-four. And she had asked about the nature of events, and I told her a little bit, and she had said, "Oh, well, you may need to go before the planning board." And I said, "That's fine. I'm perfectly happy to go before the planning board." Now, subsequent to meeting with Christina, I did send her an email outlining all the points we had discussed. And let's see. Yes, sorry, this page. My last point was, "I will wait to hear from you regarding the meeting with the planning folks to discuss the nature of events we have at Rockcraft." So that was June second, twenty-twenty-four. Subsequently, we had conversations, I said that I would, with various folks in the town, that I'm happy to go before the planning board. Back in February, on February twenty-fourth, Joe wrote a letter to Amy talking about the background and the relevant history, so on and so forth. I'm not going to read it all. The last, his conclusion, the last point, February twenty-fourth of this year, ten months ago. "If it is the town's position that the occasional rental of the lodge and surrounding grounds for private events requires planning board approval, the Marksons will gladly submit such an application as it has always been their intent to comply fully with the requirements of all permitting authorities." So that was ten months ago. So here we are on December tenth, and we still unfortunately don't have a resolution. Now, as you all know, back in August, the town decided to issue us a notice of violation. They issued this notice of violation on the Wednesday before Labor Day weekend. There was a wedding that Saturday, three days later, for the nephew of Adele McGregor. I believe she is a resident of Sevago. Now, luckily, they had mailed the notice of violation, so we didn't actually get it until after Labor Day, but we were aware because it had also been emailed. So we knew that the town had decided to issue this notice, which meant we had two weddings coming up the week after the Labor Day weekend, and then the last wedding was two weeks after that. So two weddings within three weeks of September. So Larry and I were quite distraught, very worried. We didn't know how to tell these wedding couples and their families. The town, after approving weddings for ten years, had decided to no longer allow us to have weddings, and that they had given us forty-eight hours. In the notice of violation, they said twenty-one days to resolve the boathouse issue, but forty-eight hours to stop all commercial activity. And I was looking through the town ordinances, and I saw this. Section six of Sevago's administration and enforcement ordinance says, "Violations of the terms and conditions of this ordinance shall be corrected within thirty days of receipt of notice of violation unless an extension of time is granted by a code enforcement officer or planning board." Again, we were given forty-eight hours, and the town knew that we had these weddings coming up. So Larry and I talked about it, and probably within twelve and a half minutes, we decided we are not ruining the lives of these two wedding couples on arguably one of the most important days of their lives. So we decided that we were going to refund all the money that they had paid and have them as, have their weddings at Rockcraft as our guests. It was that important to us, even though we absolutely disagreed with the town's position in terms of what is acceptable commercial activity in your home. It was so important to us that we just remove any doubt to help these two wedding couples. So we refunded the money. We sent all the information to the town, and we asked on a number of occasions for the town to confirm we won't have an issue, these wedding couples won't have an issue with their weddings. And we never received a response. Instead, one of the caterers told us that the town said that if they hold the wedding, they run the risk that the sheriff will show up and shut down the event. One of the other caterers told us that the town said that even though we refunded the rental fees, it's likely the town would deny their liquor permit. So again, there were so many conversations going back and forth. Things were being said to caterers. Things were being said to the wedding couples who showed up here to plead their case. But nothing was said to us, nothing, even though we kept asking. And even though in the notice of violation, we were directed to, if we had any questions, please contact Christina. But we received no response. The last thing I want to share with you about these wedding couples was, on the second wedding, the last wedding of the year, I received an email from the father of the bride. Karen, Larry, this is on Monday, September twenty-nine. "While the wedding was beautiful, the bride was beautiful, and Rockcraft was a perfect scenic backdrop to a seemingly flawless wedding. Of course, we all knew the difficulties behind the scenes. We had only one last scare when Madeline and Alex tried to get the marriage license." This is here, Town Hall. "They were told by the sheriff that they were participating in an illegal event. They got spooked and drove to Bridgeton to get the license." The last thing I will say, as I said in the last meetings, is we, the town, and we have spent an extraordinary amount of money arguing this. And to what end? To be able to continue us occasionally hosting weddings at this beautiful spot in this beautiful town that people love. Again, I would say to you, I would hope that we can reach a solution that everyone is happy with, and I hope that we're able to participate in a fair process. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen and Larry. That concludes our presentation. Address questions from the board, whatever.
According to the agenda, we're asking questions after both sides speak and the public?
Generally, what I'd advise, and it's up to you to set the course of proceedings, is so long as we provide an opportunity to the board to ask questions and Attorney Switzke, as well as the witnesses, and then to provide an opportunity for the Code Enforcement Officer's counsel to ask questions.
So we can ask some questions right now while everything's fresh in our heads?
Yeah, I'd encourage you to do that.
I'll start. I have a few questions. You actually answered most of them. On the eleven liquor licenses that were taken out, were any of them taken out by you, either of you?
No.
No. We see those as part of our FOA request.
And we submitted those records in our December third submission. That's part of it.
I saw them. I didn't know if it was all of them.
Yeah, so the applicant is typically the caterer, and the contact information listed is usually the wedding couple or the wedding planner or something like that.
And I believe you addressed it, but you've never hired any vendor. You've just rented the property.
Correct.
Did I understand you correctly to say that you don't charge additional if somebody is having a wedding?
No, we, we, we charge, we just charge for the rental.
Flat rate, per se. Do you have a flat rate per week, per se?
Yes.
So, I mean, it must be more wear and tear on the property, but you don't, you still don't charge?
We think we have a slightly higher security deposit.
Okay.
Right, but it's.
It's all, it's all very similar.
But you don't, I mean, there's no, there's no schedule that has different rates, whether you have a wedding or not?
There's, if you look at the, like, if somebody sends us an inquiry, then I send a response back, and I have, like, the brochure online with the cost to have, to rent the property and have your wedding. And it's very, very similar to, you know, the families that rent from us. Usually, it's the same amount. It's maybe within a few hundred dollars. For example, some of the weddings that we had this past year where it was the same amount as a week rental.
Okay.
But as I said, sometimes in the past, you know, we've, we've charged a little bit more. But it's certainly not a situation where we say, "Oh, if you're a family, you can stay at Rockcraft for twelve thousand dollars, and if you're having your wedding, it's twenty thousand dollars," or whatever it may be. It's very, it's either the same or very, very similar.
Karen, does, does the time of the rental also factor into the price, like the season?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So there are other factors involved in that?
One of the things that's been nice about Markson's weddings, actually, is that, as you can imagine, most people who want to come to Sevago want to be here in July and August. And of course, lots of folks that want to get married want to get married in September and October. So that's, you know, that's nice for us to be able to supplement that a bit. And you do, you know, so obviously, we charge, we definitely charge less in September and October, regardless of whether or not it's a wedding.
Okay, anybody else?
You had said the town had given you forty-eight hours to stop the weddings, but then you stated there's an ordinance or something in writing that says you should have thirty days if you're in violation.
I found that on the town website.
Is that where, that's where I was going, is where I will see that.
I don't see it in section six.
If it's in, if it's in there, I believe it. He is going to make it up.
Karen went, came from the town's website, right?
Sure, she's not making it up. But that doesn't, that just doesn't seem correct. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm saying that.
If you could just read the page and.
It says, "Section six of Sevago's administration and enforcement ordinance."
What page? What page?
It's going to be section six dash one.
Six five. You don't mind me looking over.
I know, I know. I knew you were going to do this.
I don't.
Any violations on this? All right, I'm on six five. What, what number? One, two, three, four, five? Fines, liability. Just go ahead.
It's actually six F. Six F? Oh, sorry, six G, six G violations. So the page would be six dash four, and then section D violations.
G violations. "Violations and terms and conditions." Ordinances shall be corrected within thirty days of receipt of violation. Okay. Thank you. I guess I have another question that I've had in my mind for a long time, too, is, so why didn't you go to the planning board?
Why don't I answer that? So the problem is the town's insisting that this is a commercial use. And the property, part of the property, and frankly, most of the area where the weddings are held are in the shoreline, so.
I'm quite aware of the property.
Yeah, yeah. So in the limited residential shoreline district, commercial uses are not allowed. So we can't go apply to the planning board for approval of a commercial, a commercial use, which is not allowed. That would be, the planning board would be, this is denied immediately. It's a commercial use.
And you're saying it's not a commercial use period?
It's not, but there are other ways. I think there are other mechanisms in the ordinance that we've suggested as an alternative. There's some, there's some wiggle room. There's some room for interpretation in the shoreline zone, so we'll put it in there.
Correct. I have that right here. Thank you.
Yep. So on average, three to five weddings a year? Is that since you've, obviously, you remodeled the property, and the completion of the remodel was twenty-twelve?
No, I think it was more like twenty thirteen, maybe.
Okay. So since the completion of the remodel, it's been an average of three to five wedding venues per year?
Yes.
Right. And, you know, during COVID, it dropped to zero, and then it went up after, as people caught up with the weddings. But the last several years, it's been back to three, four, five.
When you rent, you know, there are definitely families that rent.
Of course. So how much time do you guys spend there? I'm curious. How many weeks of summer?
We just logged up all our Christmas decorations.
Nice.
So back to the planning board aspect. So you said May twenty-twenty-four, that Christine said that you may need to go before the planning board. Did you ever submit an application? Why?
Because the reason why was when I met later in the summer.
Why don't I, why don't I take that, this question, Karen? So it's awkward to, it would have been futile to submit an application and then have the CEO come to the planning board meeting and say, like, "You should deny this because it's a commercial use. It's not allowed." It just didn't seem.
So, but, but if you were denied, you, you could come before us for a variance request.
Not for a use, I don't believe. No.
Not the shoreline zone. We just had to throw that other one, the subject.
Right, the shoreline aspect.
Yeah, so, so the particular, the particular use that, that I think more accurately describes the Marksons' use of the property, there's a catch-all provision in the shoreline zoning ordinance that says uses similar to permitted uses. But one of the permitted uses is institutional uses. So the property was owned for fifty years by the church, and the church held events very similar to what the Marksons reported. So I think there's a pretty legitimate basis to say that their use is similar to a use that is permitted in shoreline zoning district. But that's only, but the determination is made by the town. The town has to say that this is similar, and the town said, the town disagreed, and they said, "No, it's not similar." So we could submit an application on, on that basis. And we can't submit an application for a use that is prohibited. So there was really no pathway to get through the planning board.
So, so another thing that you discussed was that there was some sort of proposal. some sort of proposal or discussion regarding the boathouse and weddings. But I, I didn't see anything about that in, in the entire file.
Well, there's a reason for that, too, and that's because we're only here to talk about, you know, half of the, where you guys don't, you, you decided you don't have jurisdiction to address any of the shoreline zoning enforcement questions and that, and that's fine. We're, we're only, the focus of this is whether or not this use of the property rises to the level of a commercial use under the land use ordinance, not the shoreline zoning ordinance, because you guys don't have jurisdiction to decide that question. So we're really only focused on one of the violations in the NOB and only really half of them, half of that violation one, the part that deals with the land use ordinance.
Violation number one.
You guys don't have jurisdiction to hear the shoreline zoning piece.
So in the ream of paperwork we received, there was a lot of, well, a lot of pictures, so on and so forth, prints of the boathouse site, forgive me, there was a lot of paperwork. Did that come from the town or did that come from you guys? Yeah, I'll talk down about that. Thank you.
Can I, can I say one thing about why do we go before the planning board? Again, June of 2024, I offered to go before the planning board. Subsequent to that, we met, I think it maybe was like a month later when Christina and I met and wanted to talk, she wanted to, which was understandable, meet with the town planner, Jim Seymour, but Jim Seymour had been working with us in his role at Sebago Technical. So understandably Christina said, you know, he shouldn't be advising us on this. So I believe it was a gentleman by the name of Matt Panful, I think, from the Greater Portland.
Councilman, councilman.
What is it?
Greater Portland Council.
Council, right. So the primary reason to talk to him, I think, really was to talk about the boathouse issue. Um, Christina had brought up the idea, you know, if this is commercial activity, um, because we have weddings at Rockcraft. Ironically, he said, oh, no, because, you know, weddings have happened for many, many years now. So we were talking about this unrelated issue, the boathouse, and he was actually, under the assumption that we hadn't even started the work. And I said to him, no, actually, it's about 80 or 90% done, you realize that? So that's when Matt said to Christina, you better talk to your town council to figure this out. So it was at that point that, you know, attorneys got involved, so, for what it's worth. But even though attorneys were involved as of August or September, whatever it was, we consistently have said, we'll go to the planning board. Whether, you know, again, we don't agree with the position that the town has taken that this is a wedding business. We feel very strongly this is something that is allowed in the shoreline zone and under land use ordinance. And we're happy to make, make that point. But I know also, as Joe has said, and again, I'm not an attorney, so I, sometimes I can't follow all those legal stuff. But I know you were saying, well, there's another way we can do this and, which sounded to me, when I was thinking about it, it sounded like it was a, a very good, solid proposal. And we discussed that in a meeting last August that we had here and it was, it was dismissed. It was, we met, and I will say, I wanted very much to meet before the select board, I was not allowed to, we were not allowed to. So we had a meeting here with the chair, with, um, town manager, town council and Christina. And that's when we were discussing Joe's proposal.
Do you have anything?
Sure, I do. Couple things, the absence of the definition that was mentioned. And typical absence of definition from land use ordinances, use plain definition or standards, go down there from planning association and pull the definition, definition of commercial use is for profit. I mean, you can go into and look up the definition. I think it breaks down, I think you have two separate issues you're dealing with here. We do not have a short-term rental ordinance in the town of Sebago. We do have the mass gathering ordinance. I think you're in between, I think, a site plan approval. You can rent this out as a short-term rental under our ordinances, it's fully permissible. To turn it into a wedding venue for hosting events would need site plan approval to go through the ordinance to make sure that all other conditions are met. You're gonna have review by the fire department, fire and rescue, they're gonna look at safety, access. You're gonna deal with the DEP shoreline zoning. So the separation of having large-scale events would require a site plan approval, in my opinion, by going through everything that has been submitted. Just because the definition of commercial was omitted from the land use ordinance doesn't necessarily mean that it's not there. It's still, you're hosting a commercial style event. There's other wedding venues in town that had to go through site plan approval. In reference to the fact that liquor licenses have been issued. I can't speak on behalf of why the town has issued those. I know the town has had a lot of change in personnel, maybe they didn't know. I think probably everything with the boathouse probably brought to light the fact of, oh, wait a minute, you're running a commercial according to the ordinance, you need site plan approval, but then you're advised you can't go for site plan approval because you're in shoreline zoning. The history of the property itself is a wonderful history. It was a non-conforming use, unfortunately elapsed and can't move forward now and go back on that non-conforming use just because it's a beautiful property. It's very unfortunate. I think you have every right to continue to rent it out as a short-term rental. In reference to hosting events or advertising for weddings, then I think.
Remember, Karen, if I can just, is there, sorry, is there, I'm just gonna always be the procedural junkie here, so you'll get annoyed with me. But is there a question embedded in there? Because right now, we're kind of on the evidentiary half of the meeting. And so I want to restrict the board's conversations here to just asking questions. And then, because it sounds like what you're rolling into, some really good thoughts on deliberations, but I want to hold that until after we've closed the public hearing and, and you're in the decision-making aspect.
Yep.
Nope, I will hold the rest of my comment.
I have a question? I have one.
No, it's for you.
Okay.
I, I just have one question. When, so when you were, when Christina had told you you may have to go before the planning board, was she specific on why you, you may have to go before the planning board?
To talk about the issue of whether it was an acceptable commercial use.
Okay, did she have a follow-up? To see if you were, were thinking about getting anything together to do that?
No. But I want to speak for Christina, but it probably was shortly thereafter then, everything kind of came to a standstill because attorneys got involved.
Okay.
So the town never said you need to go in front of the planning board?
Well, they certainly have said that, um, in the last few months.
Prior to the vi, prior to the violation?
Yeah, they said, you have to go to the planning board for approval of this commercial use. But the commercial use is not allowed. So the path that the town provided was not a workable path.
But that wasn't, that wasn't to the notice of violation?
That, there were discussions leading up to the notice of violation.
So I, I have a question for you. So you, you brought up the 15 Langford LLC, um, and that was very helpful in regards to, um, advertisement and whatnot. But I'm curious as to how the condominiums would also be used to, like, host weddings?
Yeah, I think, I think the takeaway from that case is you have a company with a parent company that's clearly running a business, right? For, for profit. They're advertising it as a resort, these condominium units in the town. The town's case hinges partly upon the Markson's use of advertising to promote their, their property. That doesn't matter, that's not relevant. What's relevant is what are people doing in the property when they are there? Is it consistent with residential use? The, the lodge, Rockcraft Lodge, is a single-family dwelling. It's got a number of bedrooms, it has a kitchen and a bathroom, it has cooking facilities. And the people who stay there are, are staying at the property and using it, it, in a residential style occupancy. The, it's a unique property, right? It's, it's larger than my house. I can't have a wedding at, I don't have, and most people, most people can't. It's, it's a pretty, pretty unique property and I think everyone recognizes that. But, um, but the, the takeaway from, from that case is how you advertise it, who owns it, and whether or not, even if they're making a, a property, is, is irrelevant. What people are doing while they're there is consistent with residential use.
Okay, so I, I think this is my final question, no, actually, I have two, two questions, two questions. First, um, is, do you mind disclosing what type of insurance you have for your property?
Home insurance.
Only homeowner's insurance, you don't have any general liability or commercial liability?
No, although they, they know that on occasion you have events. When we do, um, rent to somebody who's going to have, um, a wedding, we tell them they have to get an insurance policy so that, you know, if somebody drinks too much and they fall into the lake and die, then they won't sue us.
Okay, um, and so the other thing is, there is a lot of things back and forth about the website and what it said and what it did not say. So today, I actually went online and looked it up and there was this, um, I looked up Rockcraft Lodge, Sebago, Maine, and it took me to an Amazon page. And the Amazon page that I pulled up, that I printed out today, talked about the wedding rental pricing specifically. But I didn't find anything anywhere about just renting the property. And then, and then I tried looking on Airbnb, but then I found out that they have a policy very specific that says that you can't do events at short, at their short-term rentals. So I guess I'm just curious, like, why I can't find information about, like, just weekly pricing? And I can only find wedding pricing.
Yeah, so we, for, for the weekly rentals for families, that usually goes through the Sutbees site.
Okay.
And I don't, I can't even tell you off the top of my head what they publish there.
But if you go onto that, it's, I forget, it's the suttbeeslegacyserve.com.
Okay, well.
The site that we had that focused more on the wedding, you know, people who wanted to hold events, that, you can't get to that site anymore because we, we took it down after we received the notice of violation. So if you go to rockcraftlodge.com, there's a nice page talking about the history of the property.
So I believe I'm looking at that right now.
Yeah.
So we should restrict our review as a board to the evidence that the parties have submitted. So watching that happen. Otherwise, you're gonna have to pass around your phone so that it takes a look at and you all agree isn't what it is.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else you also?
Mr. Chair, do you, do you mind if I ask a couple clarifying questions?
Sure.
That's right, the parties. Just to help me understand here, uh, it seems, seems that both parties are taking the, uh, position that the, uh, under the land use ordinance, this is in the village district, it's a part of the property, is under the shoreline zoning ordinance. Is it your position, I guess I'll ask the same question on the other side, that the land use ordinance has no bearing whatsoever on the portion of the property that's zoned shoreline? Or is the shoreline an overlay zone and, uh, is subject to both the LOA and the shoreline zoning ordinance? And it doesn't?
I, I interpret it as an overlay zone. I don't know what Amy thinks, but I think that sense is being applied.
And does that even matter in this particular issue?
Um, well, possibly, because the shoreline zoning ordinance does have a definition as commercial use and it excludes rental of single-family dwellings.
I've been told this separate, this, it's not an overlay.
So, so it's a dividing line between.
That's what I've been told.
Village and.
Correct, yeah.
So there's four districts then?
Yeah.
That's first.
So my second question, um, does the board, we've had some discussion about land use, what activities began or stopped after the notice of violation? Is that relevant to this board's task tonight?
I think it would be relevant to an enforcement action and that would be something that the CEO would have to prove in court. But we're challenging the CEO's interpretation of whether or not this is really a violation. So as of, as of August 27th.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't, I'm not sure I heard the question, were you, you were asking?
I was asking, is it necessary or relevant for this board to make a finding as to, um, essentially what activities occurred after this violation?
Uh, last, last question I have here is, uh, I, I think both parties are sort of framing the issue as, um, whether the code enforcement officer is correct or whether you folks have proven the negative, that, um, the evidence here shows that this is a commercial use, uh, that, that it's not prohibited. Am I wrong to look at it differently to, uh, look at it as whether the, um, use here is substantially related to one of the types of commercial uses that are, um, allowed, subject to a permit or prohibited? Is that the same question, is it a different question, am I wrong to look at it that way? I, I'm not sure I fully understand the question.
I was gonna say, you say that in English?
So let me, I, I can try to rephrase it. So the ordinance has a table of uses. A table of uses lists, lists 34 commercial types of commercial uses. The notice of violation states that a commercial use is prohibited in this district. Commercial use is not actually one of the 34 listed. So I'm just curious, if, if could you, like, could you claim this issue as, is this use, if the ordinance also says that uses that are substantially similar to what is allowed is allowed uses that are substantially similar to those prohibited as prohibited? So do you get my question?
I do, uh, I think so. And, you know, obviously I've reviewed those 34 examples of what is a commercial use provided in the land use ordinance and I found none of them to be similar to what the Marksons are doing with the property. So like, if you're defining commercial use by example, um, there's 34 examples of what a commercial use is in the land use ordinance and, uh, none of them really accurately come close to what the Marksons are using the property for.
Thank you.
We're ready to hear from you.
Good evening, my name is Amy Chow and I am here tonight representing, uh, the town's code enforcement officer, Christine Robinson, in this matter. And I just want to start to orient the board from, uh, the CEO's perspective as to what your task is tonight. There's been a lot of talk about a lot of stuff around the edges about, why don't you go to planning board? Or why don't we amend your mass gathering ordinance, why don't you do all those things? That's not your charge, your charge is very narrow. Your charge is to determine whether. Your charge is to determine whether the code enforcement officer committed an error when she issued the notice of violation, the portion of the notice of violation dealing with alleging that the rockcraft activities constituted a commercial use, a non-residential commercial use, in violation of the land use ordinance, at the time that she issued the notice of violation on August 27th. And what I would submit to you is that, and I'll go over, make a few comments about this, but the appallants have the burden of demonstrating that the code enforcement officer got it wrong on the law and on the facts as they existed when she issued the notice of violation. First, on the law. The law is the land use ordinance here, and it is unquestionable that commercial uses, although not defined in the land use ordinance, are listed and require planning board site plan approval. And so, non-residential uses of this property require site plan approval. I'll come back to that. We have to decide whether she was right or wrong on the interpretation of the ordinance in that respect. Let me pivot quickly to the shoreline zoning ordinance, because whether or not it applies, let's use it, all right? The shoreline zoning ordinance's definition of a commercial use...
Excuse me, what relevance, though, is the shoreline zoning ordinance?
Well, I would argue that it is not directly relevant, but there's been a lot of discussion about there's no definition of a commercial use. I agree that...
So that could be a flaw in our ordinance, but why does that make the shoreline...
Because the argument was made, I just want to address it briefly. And the argument that was made was that the shoreline zoning ordinance's definition of a commercial use is the use of lands, buildings, or structures, the intent and result of which is the production of income from the buying and selling of goods and services exclusive of rental of residential buildings, buildings and or dwelling in it. Now, I would submit to you that that exclusion at the end is intended to mean the rental, including Airbnb, the RBO, right, for residential purposes, for residential occupancy. And in fact, the reason that's important is that it's one thing for there to be vacation rentals at this beautiful estate that has been restored to be a single-family residence. But it is quite another thing to rent it for uses that are not for residential occupancy. And that is precisely what the code officer found was going on here. So, this definition does not help the other side, because otherwise, if you use this exclusion and said, anytime I rent an Airbnb, my residential property, and the renters decide to operate a weekend restaurant there and advertise to do so, or they decide to have an auction barn, and they rent it weekend after weekend, it matters how that property is being used other than for residential occupancy. So, when they are renting their property for vacation rentals, for families who want to use the full extent of the property, that is not what this code enforcement officer said was a violation. I just want to be clear about that. But when they add on, and I'll get to specifically the advertisements, the use of the property, it's a beautiful nine-acre parcel. Yes, there's lots of room for parking, but residents, if you rent the property and you're actually residing there and sleeping overnight, you probably don't need room for 60 or 70 cars, okay? So, the fact that they were using and laying out their... Using the amenities on their property for large events that were non-residential events, and making money from that rental, it turns this into a commercial use. Let me just say one thing, I don't want to get too much into the case law, because I would like to get into some highlights of actually what they've done on the property, because I think this case is clear on the law. It's also very, very clear, I think, on the facts, that what they were doing was not just vacation rentals like Airbnb and the RBO, this was something plus, and it was plus a lot, okay? And Mr. Savisky mentioned the 15 Langsford owner case, which actually was my case. And I will tell you that that case does not stand for the proposition that how you advertise it is irrelevant to whether the use is residential. What that case had to do with was whether, in that case, there was a short-term rental ordinance. You're correct, this town does not have a short-term rental ordinance. There was a different definition of a residential dwelling unit under that ordinance. There was a separate land use ordinance. So advertisement had nothing to do with it. The law found that those condominium units could get short-term rental licenses, because the definition of a residential dwelling unit under the short-term rental ordinance, not under the land use ordinance, said you need these three things, okay? That's completely different. And what Joe has said about what's relevant, he said what's relevant is what are they doing when they are there? The people who stay there, are they using it as residential occupancy? That's not exactly what's happening here, I'm submitting to you. If they were using it for residential occupancy alone, there would not have been a notice of violation. It's one thing to sleep there and even have perhaps 18 guests, they have a lot of bedrooms for their family. But when they invite 200 of their closest friends to an event that requires catering, vendors, the erection of tents, and the like, all of those things, even if they are not doing it themselves, meaning the Marxons are not the caterers. There are plenty of wedding venues in this town and across the state where the wedding venue is the shell, and the wedding couple comes in with their own wedding planner and day event coordinator. And there's coordination and a list of preferred vendors that go out. That doesn't make it not a commercial use. So, with the boards of events, I want to just focus on a couple things. Show you what is going on on the property, and Gary, if you can tell us what... So, while that's coming up, what I'd like to say is there is a law court case that is important here, and it is the Morgan B. Townsend case, which actually said that you can use a residential property and rent it out on Airbnb and do it in such an intense way and advertise it in such a way that you are holding... That what you're doing amounts to a commercial use. So, that's not this case. We're not talking about you use, you know, if there were vacation rentals, just for people staying there overnight for their own vacation use. We're not talking about that. But I think what the tests that Morgan B. Townsend said applies here is important, and that is that you need to look at the pattern of use, maintenance, advertising, and how the property holds itself out. So it's not... There's not just one factor here. It's not just, well, we only had one wedding. It's like, well, how large was the wedding? How frequent are the weddings? What's the scale of the operation? How is the property holding itself out? Is what the law court has said is relevant to determining whether this is a non-residential commercial use. So, in looking at that...
So you'll have to connect it on the computer, so the Windows key, and then you click on it?
How would I do that?
So there's like a little button in the bottom left, it's like a Windows... So you hold that, and then it'll come up in the bottom left.
So I won't spend any time on this, but I think to the question that Mr. Wagner asked about whether this is an overlay zone or not, the area in green is the shoreline zoning area, the area in white is... And the hashed area is the entire Village District. So, perhaps the shoreline zoning ordinance's definition of commercial use, you could borrow? Perhaps not. Wanted to show that you can see that a portion of the lodge is in the shoreline zone, much of the property that is offered, you know, that has the weddings, is in the shoreline zone, but also there are portions of the property, including parking areas and turnaround, that are used for the weddings as well. So it's important to look at the... How the property is used as a whole for weddings, just to show just a little bit here.
So there is a mixing, then? There is a mixing between shoreline zoning and...
Yeah.
Clearly.
I mean, it appears that way. Maybe it's working there. So, my pointer isn't working, but that's okay. So, yes, what I wanted to point out is...
Maybe try to...
Step over the front of it.
The computer.
Is that working?
Worse. Better.
There we go. Yes? Did you see that?
No. Too dark right now.
Too dark? Okay, well, never mind, we'll just keep going. I did want to point out, just to orient folks, the boathouse is in the upper right-hand corner. Again, we're not here to talk about that, okay? The lodge is in the middle there, you can see the driveway. The carriage house appears on the left right here. The tents for weddings are generally in this area, and I believe there... You can see areas on the property that it would appear are used for parking a large number of cars. This is a view essentially from Route 114, where there is that turnaround. This is Rockcraft's website as of August 8th. A lot of this information was what the code officer looked at to determine that there was a notice of violation. To the issue of whether this was a notice of violation that was issued on 48 hours notice, there were discussions, as you know, all the way back to earlier this year, that Rockcraft needed to go to the planning board to get site plan review of the wedding event use. There were discussions, we can't get into those discussions, but I will assure you, this was not a surprise. And you will see from some of the documents that were submitted in our December 8th submission, you will see that was the submission about a request to stay, that there were discussions happening in early August and even before about how to resolve these and have minimal impact on the weddings. So I just want... Even though that's not relevant to your decision, I understand that this can tug at your heartstrings, and I will assure you, the record is clear, that there were discussions way back, and Rockcraft was on notice, that they needed to go to the planning board in order to comply with the land use ordinance. And they simply did not do that. Now, on the question of why issue a bunch of liquor licenses and then suddenly stop because of the notice of violation, right? And what I will say is that there's been some discussion of the prior ownership of this property by the church, and the fact that events and weddings were held under the church's ownership. So, the problem that arose is not the town's code enforcement officer's interpretation of the ordinance. The problem arose when Rockcraft's own attorney wrote in a letter in February this year that the Marxons had restored the use of the property fully to single-family residential use. Why is that important? That's important, because any kind of grandfathering that could have happened regarding the church's holding of events or weddings at the property was a legally non-conforming use that lapsed, and it lapsed by Rockcraft's own admission. So, this issue of, yes, we were telling them to go to the planning board, and Mr. Savisky saying, but if we went to the planning board, we wouldn't get what we needed, is not a problem of the town's CEOs making, that's a problem of Rockcraft's own making. This was an admission they made, and this code officer was not focused on the overall use of the property as much as the boathouse. And so how... The fact that liquor licenses went out may have been as a result of the town's understanding that there was some grandfathering going on, until February of this year, when Rockcraft themselves maintained, no, this is now a single-family residential use. So that is a problem for them, and it's unfortunate, but the grandfathering that would have allowed the weddings to continue lapsed. So, this is their website that shows that they treat wedding rentals and vacation rentals differently.
So that was February of '25?
Yes, February 25 was when Rockcraft's attorney wrote that letter and submitted evidence that this code officer had not seen, there was a certificate of occupancy for when they did the renovations to the lodge, that it was a certificate of occupancy as a single-family residence, and a single-family residence only. So, that is a problem for Rockcraft, not created by the code officer. You have a question?
May?
Yes, please.
So, in February 25, what was the certificate? You said they got a certificate of occupancy in February of '25 for what?
No, I'm sorry. So, this code enforcement officer learned for the first time that they had gotten a certificate of occupancy in 2011 or '12. They bought the property, they spent a couple years renovating it, I don't know exactly the year, it might have been 2014.
2014, the occupancy was issued for single-family residence.
Why was the CEO issued?
Because they applied for a permit to do renovations for the use of a single-family residence. So...
But, you know, it might have been used by the church as a place for members to get together, but they really didn't change the building at all. It really was a single-family residence when the church owned it.
But the use was for church at that time, and without having changed the use to a single-family residence.
What was...
Was there documentation saying that it was an assembly hall, or whatever that was classified as?
What was it before February of '25?
It was like a convention...
What was the use before February 25?
Yes.
Well, the use...
No, it goes back to 2014.
I'm simply trying to answer the question...
Well, no, they changed it. The attorney said they changed it in 20 February of '25. What was it in January?
No. No, they didn't change it.
So let's try to be a little bit more organized in the conversation, so...
Okay.
I told you, Gayle.
I know, I'm okay with that.
Let me try to answer the question. I am not saying that the use changed in February of '25.
Okay.
What I am saying is that this code enforcement officer learned that back in 2014, a certificate of occupancy had issued for the lodge as a single-family residence. And in February 2025 is when Rockcraft's attorney also said that they... The Marxons bought the property in 2011 to restore it to a single-family residence, which means that any institutional use by the church, and any event use, or wedding use, or retreat use, that the town may have felt was grandfathered, right? There was a planner who said, there have been events here, it's grandfathered. That may have explained why liquor licenses were issued, you know, for a number of years. But when this code officer started, what I'm trying to point out is that it came to her attention that this looks like it requires planning board review. And what I would say is that your role here tonight is to determine that the ordinance requires planning board site plan review for what they were doing on the property, all right? And I would respectfully submit that if they go to the planning board and they are denied, that's not of your concern, it's out of your hands. It might, it may or may not come back to you, but tonight here, the issue is, was this code officer right in saying that you cannot operate the way you're operating without going to the planning board for site plan review? And I believe the ordinance is clear on that, and let's just quickly go through what the website said about this. So, Morgan B. Townsend says you look at a number of factors, how the property's laid out, how it's advertised, how it's held out, how it's rented, what are the fees, how it's used. And I would submit to you, this is far more than the occasional use by renters of this property. of this property. And because we don't have fully accurate information, I will show you the table that shows that there's more than three to five weddings that have happened on this property in the last four years. The average is more like seven. But on Rockcraft's website in August of this year, right before the NVO was issued, Rockcraft was advertising it as comfortably accommodating events with up to 200 guests. That is not residential occupancy. It also was saying that countless couples have chosen to exchange vows and celebrate their union at Rockcraft. This is not theweddingspot.com, this is Rockcraft's own curated website. It also did talk about amenities and mentioned the 100-amp outdoor electrical service, which is needed to outfit a tent with a band and a sound system and lighting. Now, this is their events and activities, and I know it's hard to read. Let me just, I've blown that up here. You have this all in your packets, by the way, and I've got hard copies if you'd like to look at them. But this is Rockcraft again, saying that this has comfortably hosted large celebrations of up to 200 guests. Again, that is non-residential use for large events. Rockcraft is saying, "Our staff can also offer guidance on preferred vendors for catering, tents, tables, chairs, and linen rentals, or as an entertainment." This is how they are holding themselves up. They are encouraging folks to have weddings here. They had a wedding page that showed the bride and groom. You can click on these and see all the photos. You have all of these in your packets, I'm just highlighting them here, all right? Sound system, lighting, tents, music, all of this is happening on the property. I would submit to you, this is not residential use. Large numbers of folks at a wedding. Beautiful property, nobody is disputing that. Now, this is the Sotheby's website, and this is their booking agent. And their booking agent had a button for both wedding rentals treated differently than vacation rentals. On the Sotheby's website, this is what Sotheby's, their own booking agent, says about this property. I'm gonna blow that up. "There is a parking area located on the property that can fit numerous cars. If this property were used residentially only, why would you need to put numerous cars on this property? The front lawn has electrical service to provide power for a tent and any sound system needs the event may have. There are additional costs associated with renting the property for a wedding event. And then at the very end, a wedding can be held during a week-long vacation with an additional fee of $1,500 for the event. Inquire to learn more." Now, this was up on their website in 2021. You are correct, it is very difficult to tell what they are charging for a weekly vacation rental versus a wedding rental. And I would submit to you, the fact that they did not provide any information to the town and had had three weeks to do so, and they have not, I would submit to you, answered the question straight about what their charges have been. One question I would urge you to ask them is, in September of this year, how much was a weekly, full weekly Saturday-to-Saturday rental for just a vacation rental? The reason I think you should ask that question is that by their own admission, the refund that they made of a couple for a wedding in September was all rental fees. And it's not clear what the period of rental is, but you should ask them, was this a three-night, four-day rental, which they have advertised, wedding packages for three nights and four days? That's different from seven nights, which is a full week. I don't know if this was for three nights or four days, but this check that was returned to them was for $29,624.50. If that's a three-night rental, I would submit to you that that is an additional charge for wedding rentals. We don't know because they haven't provided us any information. Now, I will also suggest that even if the rentals, you know, there's just a slight-up charge, doesn't mean that it's not commercial. They have advertised for it, they are profiting from it. It is not for residential occupancy. Now, I just want to say a little bit, this, by the way, are the tables that we produced in our letter to the board about the frequency and number of weddings. Again, I don't think any one factor is dispositive, you have to look at it as a whole. But what you heard Mr. Markson say is, "On average, three weddings, three to five." If you look by their own admission to the last four years, you have seven weddings in 2022, 10 in 2023, five in 2024, and five in 2025. And they admit that they did have weddings in '21, I think they said they had three. And although we have asked them to provide information to the board about, "Okay, for all of these weddings you've had, when did you have them? And how many people did you invite?" Because I think this goes to the nature of the commercial use. If you have a large event for 225 people or 150 people, that's a lot different than if you have a wedding where you've invited 30 people to a very small event. And we don't know, this is a smattering, but it shows that for many of these events and weddings, there are a substantial number of people who have been invited, and they are not all spending the night. They are not using it for residential occupancy. Lastly, I just want to say, this is the website as it exists today. And as you can see, it has been stripped of any advertisements of weddings and events. And you've heard the Marksons say why they've done that. I think the board could construe this as a tantamount to an admission that what they were doing was a non-residential commercial use. And I do want to just point out that they have also indicated on their website that they are a single-family residential use. That they bought the property to restore it to a single-family residence. So unless you could conclude that all of this activity, when you look at all of the factors, is residential in nature, and this is just no different than any other rental of a residential property for Airbnb. Then I believe you must find that the code enforcement officer did not commit an error when she issued this portion of the notice of violation. I think that's about all I have, except I just, give me a moment. I do want to say one more point about the transparency that Mr. Markson said that they had in providing information to the town. What was provided to the town at the time was that this property was rented for events 16% to 23% of the time. I would submit that depending on how you do the math on that, you could say, "Well, because there are no weddings in the winter, we're looking at a really small percentage number." We were not able to get clear information about exactly how they've used this property, charged this property, insurance policies, rental agreements, because they have refused to provide that information. And I would, I continue to submit that you don't need the information, I don't believe, to determine that the code enforcement officer didn't commit any errors here in RMB. But I think it is relevant that they have still not provided the information that was requested. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions here.
Okay, I've got some. So are people allowed to have weddings at their homes in Sebago?
It depends, and again, we have to look at all the facts and circumstances.
But what's it depend on? I mean, where would you find that information?
So I think you have to use common sense as to what set of facts kind of takes it from being residential to commercial. So although you're not here to draw the line, I could suggest to you that if the Marksons had a son or daughter who wanted to get married here and have a one-time wedding here, and they were not advertising to do this to the public, absolutely have a wedding. It's different when you are holding yourself out over a period of years and you are attracting yourself to the public and charging them on this. I sort of, an analogy I would use is, is it a pizza party or a pizza parlor? You could invite people over to your residential property for a pizza party, right? But you could then install a commercial pizza oven, advertise that you're having pizza, and that you're a pizza, don't call yourself a restaurant, but basically, any member of the public can come on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and you'll have seating for everyone. So the difference is, there are many differences, but it's a combination of factors.
So when you have a short-term rental, are you not allowed to extend the rights that you have in that property to your renters?
You can for residential use. What the Morgan B. Townsend case says is, again, sorry, but it depends on the pattern of usage. At some point, it can, the usage, what ended up happening in that case was that up to 32 renters were actually occupying a residential home that was on the water, and it became a party house, a frat house. And the court held that that violated a restrictive covenant that said that you cannot use this property for commercial purposes or for a trade or business. And they found that collectively, when you looked at how that property was being used and how intensely it was being used, that it functionally became a trade or business. That's not this, I mean, we can do a line drawing exercise. I would submit to you, this is not even close to any line. This is well over the line of occasional incidental use by renters. This was held out to be a very curated, organized wedding venue, to the public.
It is an exceptional property, very unusual. I mean, for Sebago Lake, there aren't many properties that are similar to it. And it lends itself very well for having events like that. But where do you draw the line, telling people what they can and cannot do on their property? If it was two attorneys that rented it for their vacation and wanted to have their law firm come on one date for a party, would that be a commercial use?
That's not what we're here to talk about. And I think, again, the size, the scale, and the advertisement makes a big difference. And I think what you see here is repeated use for large-scale weddings that are advertised for up to 200. If you say a law firm has 18 or 20 people, I mean, this code enforcement officer didn't have that issue to face.
How many people work for your law firm?
How many people?
Yeah.
There are over 100 attorneys. Is that right?
Okay, so...
Do I have to ask that?
So it's not about 18 or 20?
I'm not under oath, because I know it's over 100, but I can't...
Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, not 18 or 20, say 150 from a law firm. One day on your vacation, you're inviting all the people you work with to this property, is that a commercial use?
Sure. Short-term rental of the property for residential use, of a residential property for residential use, is permitted. If you are advertising that this can be rented out for large events, and the entire law firm rents out the property on Airbnb or on Sotheby's, and then pays to have 150 people show up and park, then it might be a commercial use. It might depend on how many times you do that, it might depend on how you're advertising. But at some point, you have to conclude that this is non-residential commercial use. That is different from its rental to residence for residential use. Otherwise, you would have an exception that swallows the rule. And then the whole point of distinguishing between commercial and residential uses would become meaningless under your ordinance. But thankfully, the hypotheticals that you're raising are not what we have here tonight. What we have is a very narrow decision and a notice of violation that was issued with months and months of notice that this was going on and needed to be corrected. There was no last-minute nature to this.
When did Rockcraft come on your radar?
May of '24. It's when the electrical permit came in for connection to the boathouse. And when that came in, I contacted the Marksons, looking for more information because I couldn't find a file in the office. It cost me to go over the planning file, because on the permit, the previous code officer wrote that it was for events. And I think I'm getting into the boathouse now, but that's when it came on, sorry.
No worries. So there's another question. In the second packet we received, there's a pile of boathouse stuff in it. Why?
So the second packet or the...
The second packet, the packet I just received a week ago.
The exhibits to the notice of violation?
Yeah, there's prints.
I believe that's the exhibits to the notice of violation. And the notice of violation did include a boathouse violation.
Well...
So there are pictures of the boathouse, and there is a whole bunch of stuff on the boathouse. And that was part of the notice of violation. And I know this board did decide that it didn't have jurisdiction over those issues. So I think because the entire notice of violation was submitted as part of the application, I believe Joe submitted that because he was challenged with the entire notice of violation, which included two violations. But we are here to account on the boathouse.
I apologize for taking too long with that. Anyway. So May of '24, when was the first time you talked to an attorney regarding Rockcraft?
Probably the end of June or early July of '24.
So two months later, April, May, June, and the next month, June?
Which is when they found out that John Seymour had a conflict.
Okay. That was June of '24?
The end of, at the end of June or early July, around that time.
Perhaps I cannot ask this question because of the current circumstance, but is there a future possibility of being able to do something at the property wedding-related? And so let me, I spent a lot of time trying to see everything from both sides. So in the land use of the Shoreland Zone, I looked at the different things. I looked at the commercial, absolutely not. I looked at home occupations, requires a planning board. And then, I don't know, because I'm not a CEO, what the definition would be of a public and private recreational areas involving minimal structural... and private recreational areas involving minimal structural development? Because that's a planning board issue, and so I don't know if that would be considered a recreational thing, but...
Well, I'll try to answer that question. First of all, this, I appreciate that you were trying to get creative here as a result of the fact that Rockcraft admitted that the grandfathered church and event use lapsed. I think, I think there's probably consensus that that's unfortunate that that happened. But I would respectfully submit that the place to become creative is not before this board. Your charge is very narrow, and it's to determine whether the code enforcement officer committed an error in her decision. And it may well be that trip to the planning board, request for an amendment, the ordinance may impact things in a positive way for this property that would benefit the community. But again, I respectfully submit that that is not your role here.
So you said the weddings are not incidental to the property, but if you look at a, say, a four-month season, they're having six weddings, that, that turns out to about five percent of, of the time. Ninety-five percent of the time, they're, it's either being used as a short-term rental or they're occupying it. So, so how is five percent not incidental?
It's not incidental, I would submit, because it's not just the number of weddings or the size, it's the entire package. It's how they are holding themselves out. The law board has said, contrary to what Mr. Seviskius said, that advertising does matter. How you hold yourself out does matter. The fact that you are saying, "Come to us, members of the public, this is not just friend of a friend of a friend would like to have an incidental wedding here." And there are charges, there are buttons on Sotheby's website that takes you to a different place, which you haven't learned how much more money they're making for the weddings. There is an up-charge for weddings. There is a charge at all for weddings and for use of the property that way.
Anybody else?
So what was the use prior to them?
A retreat facility.
A retreat facility?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, is that documented though?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. So when the Spaldings owned it, was that...
No, that was their home.
Okay, so it was a single-family home then. Did the church get a permit?
No, they were, they were, I believe, I don't know the permitting history, maybe you do, but I believe it was deemed an institutional use, and, and that, that events were, and retreats, you know, in, on that property by the church were, if not commonly held, they were, they were part of the institutional use. And obviously, the institutional use lapsed, and the events with it.
Steve, we, we have a section here for public comment. Should we allow the public to...
If you're done with questions for Attorney Chow, then you can turn over to the public, and then I would suggest one last opportunity to be at home.
Okay, but, but we'll, we'll wait until we're done, and then I'll hear you.
I, I have a question, just, so for the previous ten years, Rockcraft has been a residential home, right?
Yes.
But they've been having weddings for the last ten years? And they've been, and they've been renting it? So now, all of a sudden, on February 25th, all of a sudden, boom, it's gonna stop?
That's when their attorney said that it was changed back to a single-family use?
But it, but it changed back to a single-family use in two, ten years ago, 2014. So I, I'm not sure that it's fair that, for whatever reason, they've been using it as they've been, and you keep referring to, "pattern of usage." Well, is that, is that not a pattern of usage for the past ten years? And all of a sudden, last summer, boom, you can't do that anymore?
The pattern of usage would matter if, if it were a non-conforming use that didn't lapse. So the pattern, the fact that they were using it, and that the town didn't know that they were alleging that it was just a single-family residence, and the town was issuing liquor licenses...
Well, the town knew it was being used for weddings, because they were issuing liquor licenses, and they knew it was being rented. The town knew, the town knew all this.
Yeah, I think there, I think, the difficulty with a grandfathered non-conforming use is that there's never really a permit associated with that. There's sort of a common understanding that something that is not currently allowed under your current ordinance has been going on for a long enough period of time without lapsing, that it should be allowed to continue. So that, I would agree with you, that the pattern of usage comes in.
So if it did, if it did lapse from previous owner to when they, ten years ago, so there was a lapse there, but there's been no change in pattern of use? So because of a technicality of lapsing, because I bought it from you, or you bought it for me, it's been used that way, actually, it's been used that way for sixty years that I know of.
Yeah, I mean, the reason that it's important is to follow your ordinance, the legal use changed on the property, and so...
So I don't, is that fair for the legal, you're gonna change the use on a property that's been, they've been using it this way for eighty years, and now the town passes a, an ordinance that says they can't do it?
They requested a permit to change the use. They requested a permit to, to do renovations, to create a single-family residence. They caused this change in use. The occupancy...
A dozen years ago.
So, 2014, correct.
Ten years ago. So they changed the, the, the use of it, but they didn't change the pattern of usage? It still was being, it still, they were doing the same thing that's been going on for a hundred years, eighty years, I don't know. I've been around sixty.
So I have an analogy, and you guys can tell me if this is not appropriate. So you drive through Downby Jordans and Sportsman's every single day, and you're going sixty miles an hour, right? And then one day, you get pulled over by the cop. And then you argue, "Well, you can't ticket me for speeding, because I've been speeding every day forever."
I don't think that's a good analogy. That's my opinion.
That's just the luck of the draw.
Well, the grandfathering, I guess, is important if, if we come to the conclusion that it is an illegal use, and then we would wanna, I think, get into grandfathering, but...
When does it, when does it become a precedent? For instance, the Tompkins handing out liquor permits for the past eight to ten years that we know of, because they don't keep track of it, but that's whatever. When does that state, when does that become a precedent, that this is okay by us, we keep handing them out?
Well, I think you, two different departments. You have a Board of Selectmen, I believe, that approves liquor licenses?
No, they've been getting these from Letitia.
The town clerk approves those, not the code enforcement.
Correct, correct. So when something comes to a planning or code enforcement for review, it's completely separate. So if somebody's been issuing liquor licenses, if you decide that you wanna have a wedding at your property, and you wanna have a caterer, that caterer's gonna come up here and get a liquor license, because you have a child getting married on your property as a one-time thing. Just because the town issues a liquor license doesn't all of a sudden turn his private property into a venue or an events complex. There's two different departments. Now, if he started renting stuff out, or need to go get a permit, then that's when the code enforcement, planning is gonna say, "Oh, wait a minute, you have to go through land use ordinance, you have to go through site plan review."
So it set, it set off a chain of events?
It, it did. Very unfortunate. I mean, I love the property, it's a beautiful piece of property, it's great to have in town, but it's...
But we've gotta come to a decision, is, is this a commercial use? And is it in violation of the land use ordinance? If we decide that it is, then we, them discussing grandfathering is appropriate, but it's, we're getting ahead of ourselves.
I don't even think grandfathering, it's non-conforming, is, is for us to decide right now. The only thing for us to decide is the violation.
Technically, we just have to decide if she was not supposed to do a violation.
Can I just have you turn that into a question for Attorney Chow to answer, or I can do it for you if you don't mind? Is, is the factual question of whether the property was grandfathered, and when that may have happened, and when it may have, that status may have lapsed, is that relevant to the issue in front of this board?
No, I don't believe it is. Because what's, what's, it simply explains, okay, let me, let me try to attack, attack it this way. There is a question of, okay, liquor licenses have been issued over and over and over again. First thing I wanna say about that is, it seems to be, and I apologize for making these legal arguments, an estoppel argument, or, or an argument of, "Well, you've, you've been issuing these tickets out, or these licenses out over and over again, when maybe you should never have done that," town. So even, it's sort of like two rights, two wrongs don't make a right. It's when the town discovered what was actually going on, and had reviewed the file, and seen that it hadn't gotten a planning board, and seen that there was permitting for a single-family residence, that's what becomes important. And, and not, I don't think grandfathering really has anything to do with it. Also, I will just admit for the record, also wanted to say for the record, that this board does not have the jurisdiction to make, to consider equitable arguments like estoppel or latches. In other words, you have to apply the facts to the law and the ordinance, and determine whether the code enforcement officer did that, regardless of whether it might be incredibly unfair, or something happened that the town should be estopped from claiming something different. That is an equitable issue that could go to the select board, but not this body. Courts have been very clear that boards of appeals do not have jurisdiction to apply equity in their decisions.
So Amy, just, just for clarification, our only job is to determine if Christina interpreted the law to give them a violation?
Correct, correct.
That's it.
Correct.
None of the other song and dance. We just need to determine if she knows the law, and if she violated them, and if that was appropriate or not.
Correct. If we agree that what they are doing is, is a commercial...
Right.
...use.
Another way of looking at this is, with the amount of use and all of the collective activity beyond its use as a rental, should they have gone to the, to, should they be required to go to the planning board for the site plan review, for the impacts on the parking for two-hundred-person weddings, for the impacts that any other wedding venue, frankly, in your town has had to get something...
Anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah, we're gonna go over to these tables. One second.
I think the chair has asked me a few questions for this part.
Yeah, that, we'll do that when we deliberate.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, sir?
I'm Dave Donigan, and I'm a neighbor of the Rockcraft, been sold for fifty years. And you're talking a little bit about what could be the problem. Try to understand better what's happening, which I'd like to see the option to survive the rule of ability to be used for events that can be achieved. I'd much prefer the code enforcement officer to try to work that out beforehand, to allow us to have that in the future for possibilities for weddings or events like that. I point out from the church's report of 2009, the following. The facilities booked for nearly every weekend year-round were used by church groups and other nonprofit organizations. In order to keep Rockcraft financially viable, the conference, they've had to look beyond its own member churches, other churches, nonprofits such as local school districts, and the Chivas High School from Portland. Now, my concern, and I guess Kathy answered this, that I thought, if you're gonna run this for, what we've seen, forty years with the church running these conferences, with the parking lots being full, with the place being lively and active, along comes someone that has to spend money to repair a roof that's leaking, or fix the building up, and is looking for ways to make use of that facility as the jewel, I think, of a building in Sebago. So I much would have preferred if the code enforcement officer, I'm sure that the previous code enforcement officer looked the other way, saying, "I don't want this to happen, I think it's something that's worth doing." And so that just simply went away. But I'd much prefer, as I said, a way of finding a way out. I really ask the question, myself, with fifty years of conferences going on, with every weekend being busy, not disturbing us, not disturbing people in the area, the parking lot was needed for those purposes, as laws bear today. Why then can't we find a way forward, and the problem is nonprofit versus profit? If this, if they haven't had a nonprofit and did this, I think you would have had commercial today. They could have that, they could do what they wanted to do. I don't know how you work that out. But I ask the questions about grandfathering, I ask the question, "What's the name, has a thing of estoppel, you know, it's been going on for a long time?" Even the question of estoppel, if they've done it five or six years ago, you come in and say, "Now we're in a stop, we've been doing this." There's something in that previous use that anybody's, anybody's saying anything. So I don't know of any way of solving this. I have a code enforcement officer, work with the owners, come up with a way that we in the future can have events like wedding, they can have events like wedding. And the only difference seems to be, if they were had a nonprofit entity, they could do that. On the other hand, they might, oh, the building could have been a large investment. I'm not sure with the amount of money they paid on the building, plus their taxes and other costs, whether even making money now with respect to that event, running it five or sixteen years. So anyway, my comment is then, find a way to solve this, so we have it in the future, and not just have it come and change.
Thank you. Then, just for the record, you're in a butter, and, and you have not been in opposition to the weddings?
No, no. In fact, we had an event there ourselves once, many years ago, which was fine, we had one day. Keep in mind that the wedding with all those people is only for one afternoon, right? People may, anybody may live in the house, but the two-hundred people don't stay there for three or four days, right? In a tent somewhere or something. They come and go, that's about it. And even the traffic's not good, and, and people haven't had to complain, "Oh, there's another wedding, that's fine, play a little music on Saturday night, that's fine." But it's all been, from our perspective, it's something to keep and maintain here in Sebago. I've often thought this should be a place for music, that people come and listen to music, be a great spot to have it. So let's not find a way to end this, as opposed to, let's find a way to solve it. I don't know if you can have any, make your decision, right? Yes, they violated, but they violated it before that with the other code enforcement who didn't look, look the other way.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe some estoppel here can add here.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in public?
We talk around this a lot.
Okay, ask me name, please?
I'm sorry, Merle Carver, I live at 87 Blackbant Road. And most I do is drive by this property once a day. And I guess there's been comments about the volume of weddings that occur there, whether it be five, or seven, or ten, or whatever. But there's nothing been said about how many days that represents, how many days they occupy it as a second hole, or how many days they actually rent it for non-wedding purposes. And I think that's relevant, once the, one element that you have to consider, is this a commercial use? And I'll give you my personal observation, is the wedding venue doesn't have to offer soup to dust, it's just the premises that are leased that are the wedding venue. So that, that is a service business, which, if it were outside the Shoreland area, would be... would be permissible by our land use guidelines. It's unfortunate, very unfortunate for the property, which is a great property. I've only seen it from the road and the pictures, is that it's located in the shoreline. So, that thing gets to another issue, which has not even been brought up today. And when they have 30, 50, 70, 100-plus people at a wedding, even if it's for a single day, is there adequate, is there on-site adequate waste disposal capabilities for that size of a group?
There are. They require...
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Claudia Lowe. I live on Anderson Road. And I am a library trustee. I'm sorry, I had to write mine down. I'm not as good as these guys. I don't pretend to know all the details and legal background, but I'm guessing issue number one had not come out of history. I think we can look at it in a different way. My interest is twofold. One is the historic connection between Rockcraft and the Town and library. And the second is the constant comment that the Town is not business-friendly and the circuit seems to submit that concern. First, it's history and why I care. After Leon and Dorothy's calling Bill Rockcraft like, "The library, and Leon donated by Harry Young and Fitch." Leon died about that time, but Dorothy lived here until 1963. They employed Town residents to work for them. Dorothy helped both organizations, took employees to the Royal Sphere in New York, bought the Fitch's farm and donated it to the Town for school and left money in her will for the library and Long Beach Association. She left Rockcraft to the niece and then donated it to the United Brothers of Christ. They had retreats there and functions there. In fact, one of our library trustees was married there. When the Marksons bought Rockcraft, they wanted to honor and carry on the connection to the library. The church had given the library corporate, thinking of Dorothy. We found it, it was her niece. We gave it back so it could be installed in Rockcraft's library. When the renovation was done, it had an open house and let us use that as a fundraiser. Many residents had family members come to there, who had worked there and told stories. And this summer, we had a concert on the house, which many enjoyed. A number of people, including neighbors, told us they hoped there was yet there was another. We were told the limit was 200. I would offer some things to consider in your deliberations of this single-family home. Not long ago, the ordinance committee suggested an ordinance to cover property rentals. There was no interest in it. Indeed, there was strong opposition for those attending the public hearing. Therefore, homeowners and rent property can allow whatever use of that property that is illegal and may be destructive to neighbors. We have many properties along the shoreline that could be used for gatherings like this. There are many people who rented properties out. We can rent our homes to people along the lake, to people, a groups of people, occasionally with Airbnb. They may use it for family reunion, a birthday, a wedding, or a such gathering. They might hire you, flowers, food and living stuff. The owner of the property is not running a business doing that. They just rented out the property. The renter is hiring and paying for those services, not running a business. Is this any different? People rent Rockcraft for weddings and reunions. Those renters hire the musicians, the officiants, and the caterer. If a caterer serves liquor, they need to be licensed with the state. And since these groups rent portable toilets, they always move on to the lake. In addition, other master companies look for places to stay. They look for places to eat at, have a drink. In other words, that's where many other businesses are licensed to be supplied. Renting Rockcraft is a little harmful to the lake. Then our arenas, marinas, I've found beaches that are private rental units. Aunt Coetka, which also has weddings. The dog that serves SKK or Jem's, all would be trawling zoning and they're bringing many people. And to respond to a couple of comments. The mass gathering ordinance for Sevago has 500 for minor gatherings and 1,000 for major mass gatherings. This does not approach that. And just to respond to the other two wedding venues. Okay, one of them offers service. They both offer services. One has their own bar for people, wedding guests who dump the cabins. It's not a single-family property. The other wedding venue has a bakery and flowers that they grow. Both are sold as a profit to those who own the property. They are businesses. And the pattern of use was not illegal before. I'm not sure why it is now. Right now, our ordinance has no limits on the number of visitors at a rental property. We have no licenses and no permissions needed for any uses, no limits on the number of times a property is rented, and no limits on advertising. There is also no limit on how much is charged. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We have two letters that we've received, emails. They're both from the Court family, who is the abutter to the south of Rockcraft. And I'm not gonna read them, 'cause I'll surmise them. They are not opposed to the weddings, but they do think that Rockcraft should go through a process with the planning board for approvals. But one of them states, "Understand, I'm not opposed to this property being used as a high-end rental property and wedding venue." The other, the other person is, basically says the same thing.
Mr. Chair, just a quick, were those circulated to all the parties?
They came in like just before the...
Do you mind if we just pass them?
Oh, no, no.
Can you make some help his hair? That would be great.
Sorry about that. While Garrett's doing that, we're gonna take a couple of House keeping matters. Is the board deeming part of its record all of the submissions from the parties and these two letters?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Making it part of the record?
Are you considering that as part of your record?
Yes, yes.
And are there any objections to any materials that have been submitted being considered part of the records from the parties?
I wanna see it first.
No, I haven't seen those emails, but... Right, yeah, aside from these two.
I understand that they were submitted and they shared with parties now, so...
Yeah. These are, this is one of the board members' copies.
Just give us about one minute.
Yeah. Quick break. Two-minute break? Yeah. You probably having a break?
Yeah, two minutes. Which may be three or four.
Or why I said to this to figure out?
Yeah. You walked out and then everybody was like, gotta be like Andrew. Unbelievable. Corr- Kurt's probably in the laser.
No, I'm there. Kurt comes in and says hi to me. And somebody's being a little too loud all the time. Now, I'm like, something's coming for me. Somebody in there and there. I'm like, what's going on? Yeah, it was weird. Did we take a five-minute?
It's a two-minute.
Two minutes.
Not to be confused. Three minutes. One minute. All the minutes.
Yeah, we are recording. Mr. Chair, do you mind if I take control for a second?
No, go right ahead.
So, what we just distributed are copies of the ARMB website and the Rockcraft website that Lori was referencing and her remarks during the Marksons testimony. So, we just wanted to add the suggestion of... Attorney Chow, make sure that these are included in the record. And I assume there are no objections? So, Mr. Chair, these, those two documents are in the record. And then, my understanding, anybody can disagree, that the two emails from the courts that have been circulated are also in the record.
Yes.
Okay. So, at this time, Mr. Chair, you've heard from members of the public. I suggest you provide an opportunity for both sides to offer any additional testimony. And they also have the option, they haven't exercised it yet, and they may choose not to. But either side can ask questions of the prospective witnesses.
Okay, yeah. So, we'll have follow-up questions?
I'm sorry, just point of order while we're on documents. I just have two sets of documents to offer, your board. These are just hard copies of the PowerPoint that I had. And I can hand those out to the parties. And then, this is... This is, these are letters and regarding a refunded wedding from this fall that I've talked about in my comments.
Trouble right now. Why would you not have submitted those at the October 30th?
I use this, I use this in rebuttal in response to Mr. Markson's comments and charges. And we're gonna bring it up unless he brings it up.
So, while I was looking over the letter, any objections to the PowerPoint page copies being included as part of the record? So, seeing that on the record also includes the copies of the PowerPoint presentation. So, turning to the letter dated September 4th and Larry Markson, that was brought up in rebuttal. Amy, Joe, any objections to that?
Definitely.
I sent you some... Yes. Code enforcement, sorry. Okay, so that is also a part of the record. Any other record items to deal with?
All right, thank you.
Seeing that, Mr. Chair, I suggest you start with...
Okay, shall we discuss the nine o'clock or wait till nine o'clock? I'm happy to extend it right now.
Sure. So, under your rules, it needs to be a unanimous vote to extend passing. I'd suggest you pick a time or a point in the proceeding.
Our five laws requires to get done at nine. I would like to propose we extend it to 10 o'clock.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we extend the meeting this evening until at the latest 10:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
I'll talk fast.
Mr. Savisky?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I did want to address a few things that have come since we gave our presentation, so... So, first, you've heard a lot of talk about this case Morgan v. Townsend, and how that bears upon the question of what is a commercial versus residential use of a property. And I wanted to make an important distinction between that case and what we're talking about here. So, similarly, that was a large rental property on a coastal piece of property. But the court in that case was not interpreting an ordinance. It was, frankly, it was a dispute that I think arose because, as Amy said, it turned into a rat house. People were being raucous and the neighbors started complaining. And the reason why they were complaining is that there was a restrictive covenant on the property. And let me read to you exactly what that restrictive covenant said. "The premises herein conveyed shall not be used or occupied for any purpose other than for private residential purposes, and no trade or business shall be conducted therefrom, and no building, structure, trailer, mobile home, object, or thing whatsoever other than a private dwelling house for use and occupancy by one family. And such outbuildings, as are usual customary and pertinent to the private residence, shall be erected or placed thereon. And not more than one such dwelling shall be erected or placed upon said lot." So, that was a restrictive covenant that applied to the property, the Townsend, I think it's the Townsend's property. So, that was what the court was looking at. They weren't interpreting a commercial use provision in an ordinance. I should note also, too, you know, five out of the seven justices of the Supreme Court said, this is, given the strict language of this restrictive covenant, I think the repeated rentals of the property violate the restrictive covenant. But actually, two of them disagreed. There was a dissent in that case. So, not even a restrictive covenant as strict as that is a clear cut. Is this commercial use or not? So, I wanted to make that point. I want to be clear about discussing the non-conforming status of the property. Attorney Chow characterized my letter as an admission that it had lapsed. It's not an admission that, we never admitted that it lapsed. We just noted to the Town the potential issue of, you know, this 12-month period that's put in the ordinance for a non-conforming use to potentially lapse. And what, I mean, the renovations to the property took longer than that. So, what would have happened if, for example, you, you know, you buy a piece of a commercial property with the intent to carry on the same type of use, but because of renovations to the property, you're unable to carry on really any use of the property? Does that toll the non-conformity clock? I don't know. I mentioned it, I just want to be clear that we're not admitting that the non-conforming use lapsed. We're just, it's a problem. It's a problem that we saw with proceeding on the basis of a planning board application as a commercial use. We thought other uses that were more appropriate, that the planning board could have potentially reviewed this use. Let me see. You know, it's interesting, and Mr. Chair, you made the point of what you can, what use you can and cannot make of your own property. You asked the question, you know, what if they wanted to have a family wedding on this property? In fact, they have. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Your niece?
Our niece, yeah.
So, the fact that the owners of a property who live at Rockcraft can host an event there for their family, but yet the people who rent the property cannot do the exact same thing in connection with their residential use of the property. The period of, the Morgan versus Townsend case, limited in its applicability here, does actually say that it's not necessarily the period of occupancy that matters. the period of occupancy that matters, it's what you're doing while you're there. So the renters at Rockcraft, they go there to use the property residentially. For one of the day, one of the seven or so days that they're there, they've got a wedding where they invite their own families and friends and that sort of thing. Two more points. There was a, in the PowerPoint presentation, there was a discussion of the, I think it was the South East website that broke down, there was a button, a link for wedding inquiries and a link for vacation inquiries. And I want to turn it over to the Marksons to explain what those links meant.
Was that, I think, was that our website?
It might have been. Oh, yes, I think it was.
It was our website, yes.
Can you explain the difference between the wedding link versus the vacation?
If anyone is interested in renting and having a wedding, I will deal with them directly. But if it's somebody, if it's a family, sometimes I'll also rent to families, but South East and Portland will typically handle the majority of the family rentals. So if you say, you know, family vacation or whatever, if you click on it, it should bring you to Legacy. And one thing I would add to Legacy is if you look at their contract, I just pulled it up, and part of the description is unlike a hotel or resort, this property is a private home. That's part of the Legacy contract.
So it's just directing people to the appropriate.
Right, yes.
Right. But finally, there was, these questions are coming mainly from the CEO and not necessarily from the board, but it might be helpful to the board to describe in more detail the pricing for what it costs to rent this property. And I think the Marksons attempted to explain that earlier in our presentation. It's not, you know, it varies for, what I understand, a number of factors, which you can explain better than you, but the time of year, the length of the stay, the cleaning fee, South East charges a commission from what I understand. So I wonder if you could maybe explain, try to explain in greater detail.
Sure.
The breakdown of the pricing for what it costs.
Right, and I will say that there's never really an exact science. There have been times where people have called me and they're on a budget, and I've given them a cheaper price. I actually had somebody who was serving in the military, and I gave them a cheaper price. But when we were talking, when Town Council was talking, I quickly went up to a couple of the rentals from 2025. And one thing I will say, the check that we gave for $29,000.
Could you break down what that referenced?
Sure, I can break that down. Well, I can tell you roughly, I actually don't have the exact amount, but I can, I'd like to first make the point, though, that Town Council is saying that she doesn't know what we do because we haven't supplied this information. And again, I will say, why didn't, why weren't all these questions asked months and months ago? Number one. Number two, the check that was referenced includes a security deposit, a refundable security deposit, includes main tax, which we obviously didn't pay to the state because there was no money involved, and cleaning fee. So we had a family rental.
Do you have like a sort of a line item list of what that?
Which check was that? Was that for the, was that the Conway one? Okay, perfect, yes, I have it right here. So the Conway rental was $22,4500 for the refundable security deposit, $1,000 more because they had two dogs, $1,050 for cleaning, and $2,074 for tax. Family rental, we charge.
And that was for how long a term?
I hope they can.
That was for seven days.
Seven days.
Seven days.
It's very fast.
I don't think it really matters what they charge, it's none of our business. That's my opinion. I don't care if they charge $100,000 or $1,000.
Hold on, hold on. Can you just repeat what you are?
I will repeat this, and I do want to stress, it is not cast in stone. This is what I'm going to charge you for a week in July, but it's relatively the same. So I think to me, that's the most important point. So again, for the Conway rental that was refunded, $29,000 included the $4,500 for the security deposit because they had the extra dog, I mean, they had two dogs, so it was an extra $1,000 for a security deposit, $1,050 for cleaning, and $2,074 for tax.
So the rental fee for seven days was $22,000.
And then the rental fee for a week in July was $22,500. Again, I typically charge.
This is for a family?
Yes, the family, yeah.
A family rented for a week?
Right.
So it was actually a little bit more in that case.
Because of dogs.
What?
Because of dogs.
Or for the Conway?
No, for July.
Oh, sorry.
Well, and what happens too a lot of times is that when people ask me, you know, what is it that you charge? You know, a lot of times people will ask, you know, gee, can you discount it, or can you do this, or can you do that? And why not? Which leads me to the point, too, that, you know, as the gentleman in the audience said, if we were like the church, we would be renting Rockcraft, you know, nonstop. But, but we don't, you know, we just do this to help, and we still, it still costs us a lot of money, which is fine. I'm very happy with where we are. But that's, that's what we're doing, we're defraying costs, we're not running a business. One last point I want to make, too, is it was actually on July 30th, 2024, that I met with Christina and Matt Panfield of the Greater Portland Council of Governments and my brother Dave. So it was after that point that attorneys got involved, July of 2024.
Thank you. Can I just, just to sort of echo what Karen said, the price for a week is about the same for family vacations or for people who rent and want a wedding. In individual cases, Karen sometimes adjusts the cost. Maybe it's someone who's come before, maybe it's someone who's really on a budget but wants to have, you know, a really special event. So it's not an exact science. In the two examples Karen looked up during the break, the family vacation actually was 500 more for the base lease, right? But we, you know, there's, all of the contracts are structured the same way. There's a base lease, there's a security deposit, there's a cleaning fee, and there's main, 9% main taxes.
One thing I want to say, too, now that I'm thinking about it, sometimes we will rent for like four nights during the summertime. And we don't, you know, charge a discount, not that much, but our reasoning is twofold. First of all, it's the summertime, most people will say, if you want to stay at my house, you have to rent it for a week. So that's part of it. But the second part, more important, is that we'll just go up there, you know, for the three or four days during the week when, you know, when it's available, because someone's only there for three nights or four nights.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, a final thought, and I know we've been here a couple of times, I don't want to believe we're bored, but when you think about a commercial use, and the word profit has been tied to commercial use.
What was that word? I'm sorry?
Profit.
Profit, I'm sorry.
If the Marksons were running a business, they're doing a terrible job at it. As I said in my remarks to the board, I don't know if you remember this, but the property taxes on the Rockcraft property are $52,000 a year. So they would need to hold at least two weddings just to pay for that expense. Karen, I assume that the insurance expenses.
Over $30,000.
Yeah. So I just wanted to leave the board with that point. We're talking about three to five days on average in a year. This is what it boils down to. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Shall we give both sides and then ask our questions? I think that'd be fair.
Yes, I suggest that you turn it over to Attorney Chow. She has any further testimony themselves or any additional questions of the Marksons? Or sorry, any questions?
I do just have one comment, and I would like to refer the board to the section of your ordinance, I know you're going to go there in deliberations, that lists both residential uses and commercial uses. And I would like to refer the board specifically to the section that occurs before that, which is on page 4-2, it's section 4C3 of your ordinance.
Whoa.
Say that again?
I know, sorry. 4C3.
4, 2.
The land use ordinance.
3.
4C3.
Uses requiring a planning board permit?
Yes, yes, exactly. And that's under the section C, uses substantially similar to permitted uses, may be permitted. So the way your ordinance arranges both residential and commercial uses is it does give a laundry list, and it says if you're in the village district.
You want to.
It says that certain uses require planning board site plan review. And if you're looking at commercial uses, you are correct that you will not see wedding venue there. You'll see things that, you know, you could say bed and breakfast, motel, hotel, they don't neatly fit, indoor entertainment and recreation, rental cabins and cottages, there's not, there's not a neat fit, right? And the reason, the reason I'm mentioning that is that all of those uses I mentioned that you will decide if they sort of fit, every single one of those requires planning board site plan approval. And the reason why is because you're using the land differently than if you were using it simply as a residential property. Even, I will just say, if you look under residential uses, a home occupation in the village district, even a home occupation, which I don't think this qualifies for, even that requires planning board site plan review. So just getting back to the issue that is before you, did this code officer commit an error in determining that we had a violation of the land use ordinance because Rockcraft, based on its use of the property and the wedding and event venues, had not obtained planning board site plan approval for that use? I would suggest that your ordinance supports that even if you can't find wedding venue in that list, because 4C3 says that uses substantially similar to those requiring a planning board permit, but which are not listed in the schedule of uses, may be permitted by the planning board. The point being that I think if you look at this table, it is difficult to conclude that this kind of use shouldn't go to the planning board for site plan review, and that's what we're asking you to find in determining that this code officer didn't commit an error in issuing this notice of violation. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. When you renovated the building, did you change the layout or change walls or change the utility of it at all?
It was down to the studs renovation, because I didn't hope anybody was there when the church had owned it, but they had chopped up a lot of the original bedrooms into like mini bedrooms so that they could have as many people stay at the lodge as possible. So my brother Dave spent a tremendous amount of time going over old photographs that Dorothy Spalding's niece had given us to try and bring it back to the way it looked when it was originally built in 1919.
Was the main part of the living area?
Oh, no, that's all, that's all the same, except we painted it.
So it hadn't been, it hadn't been remodeled when the church owned it to have open rooms or function rooms or things like that? You kept the house the same?
The living room for the most, the living room and the dining room were the same, but even there's a library there that they actually converted into a bedroom, and we brought it back to a library.
And when you got the CO, is that something that was just given to you or did you request it? The certificate of occupancy?
I'm sure we must have requested after we finished.
It's part of the process.
The renovation. My brother Dave was in charge of the renovation, and he's very, very meticulous and very detail oriented, and as Christina knows, that's why we recreated file for the town since the town didn't have the various permits that had been given to us and whatnot, so.
So it was brought up about the parking area that you created, but I saw a spot on the top left side of the property, but that's where the carriage house used to be, isn't it?
Yeah, we actually, the carriage house, we moved. So that's on the opposite side of the lodge.
Correct, so that spot that looks like a parking area.
You see it right from the, from 114.
No, I, yeah, no, I've seen that, but originally it was over in what looks like a parking lot that was created.
It was, it was very close to the mausoleum, and that was used as a bunkhouse. So there were, I think, space for like 20 people to be there.
And why do you refer?
Can I just answer?
Sure.
So we brought it closer because it's actually, the top floor is this, you know, the TV and all that. Down below is the garage.
Okay, so what I'm getting at.
Garage, so we brought it closer so it would be closer to the lodge.
What I'm getting at is that space that looks like a parking lot was created was where the garage was before you moved it.
The carriage house by the mausoleum.
Where people park.
Yes.
Well, yes, although they actually park like in the middle area that's close.
On the roadways.
They park on Rockcraft Road, and then they also park like in the middle part, around the circle.
No.
Not the circle?
I think the question is, do they park where the bunkhouse used to be?
Not typically. They don't typically.
Well, I just, it looked like it was a parking lot, and it was alleged that you created a parking lot, but I, I haven't been on your property for many years, but I've been on it before. But the garage used to be back there by the mausoleum.
The carriage house, yes, yes.
Yeah, well, excuse me, carriage house. All right, that's all, okay. Anybody else?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, so.
So we close, make a motion to close the public hearing before we go into deliberations?
Okay, make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
All in favor? All right, so next item is board chair summarizes the discussion. So we have to simply determine if there's a commercial use and a non-approved. and a, a non-approved residential, excuse me, non-approved commercial use of a residential property. The one side that claims they have a residential use that happens to be good for weddings and they rent it to people that carry on the weddings. They are not in the wedding business, they testified that they don't receive money from the weddings. They simply rent the property as a short-term rental. The code enforcement officer alleges that it is a commercial use because of the way they rent it, targeting a wedding party along with multiple online advertisers and, and, you know, seeking out people that want to use the property for weddings. So we, we have to determine which, which, which appears right. Is that enough of a summary, you think?
Yeah.
All right, would anybody like to start with what you, what you think?
I'll let him.
Yeah?
He said he's not going first.
I think normally the chair goes last, doesn't he? I don't mind going first.
There are no hard and fast rules.
All right, I will go first. As we, as we found in the past, our, our ordinance is inadequate. It, it does not describe a commu, commercial use. It does not regulate events, functions, weddings, and it does not address or regulate short-term rentals. The, the wedding use, if they have it five a year, that's less, and if you look at it on a four-month season, which is typically wedding season, I think, and the summer season anyway, it's 4% of the use. I, I think that's an incidental use. People can have weddings at their house, you can rent your house for people that want to have weddings. There's nothing that says that whether it be 20 or 150 people, you can have one or you can't. Our, our ordinance says nothing about that. So it, it's not regulated. If the town wants to do something about it, they should have some sort of ordinance that says you can only have so many per year or you can't have them at all, or, or regulate short-term rentals and not allow short-term rentals to have large groups. Property's extraordinary property. If they could only rent to families, they probably wouldn't find many people to rent it. Beautiful property, but I can't see a family of five renting, renting their property. I don't think they're, I think as soon as they cross the line and get into the wedding business and start receiving money for planning the wedding or providing the food or anything, then they're in the wedding business and it would be a commercial use. But as they are using it now, I don't think it's commercial use.
Well, I, can I go next or is it over?
Yeah, whoever wants to go.
I, I guess I'm in agreement with Bruce. After listening to their testimony, I, I don't feel they're doing this to, as a commercial use, to make, to make a profit. To me, it seems like they're doing it to help, help with some of the bills. The bills are extravagant. It's, you know, it's a beautiful property and it's a huge property, so the taxes are a lot, insurance is a lot, and I don't think it's being used as a commercial use.
I guess.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I think it is being used as a commercial use. I think by your own admittance that you did not move forward with an application to the planning board because you knew it would be denied for commercial use. When you know you're not going to get approval because the shoreline zoning ordinance states no commercial use in the shoreline zoning. I don't care about the dollar amounts or anything, I think that is private. But clearly you're advertising for a business use, for hosting events. It's a very tough decision. It definitely pulls at heartstrings, I think, as mentioned earlier. It's a beautiful property. I don't think any of this probably would have come up if it wasn't for having to approach the town for a permit and then it all came to light. I think the ordinance is very clear and kind of black and white on the matter. We can pick apart that it doesn't have a definition. In the land use ordinance, but the shoreline zoning, which is where the property most of, where everything takes place is located, is shoreline zoning, it does have a definition. And there's alternative means when there is no definition in the ordinance of where you go to look for definition. I already had section 4-2C3 jotted down during my review of the package. A land use ordinance can't spell out every single use that's out there. It's impossible. So there is always that caveat of if it's not listed out here, you find a condition that is very similar to where it fits in. And this would be a commercial use of services. I, I see what you're trying to do, it's a beautiful property, but I do feel that it is a commercial use.
Yeah, I can, I can go. I just want to make sure that I have my
You're gonna move to the last?
I'm gonna move to the last. No, you can go if you want. Okay. So, um, as I said, I, I spent a lot of time researching and looking into everything and trying to see both sides. Unfortunately, I, I agree with the, with the violation that it's commercial and I apologize for that, but I base that on the occupancy permit. Not, not that this is specifically relative to you guys, but one of our land use standards discuss 100 amp use service for a house. So that's a, it's a pretty large amperage to have outdoors. The shoreline zoning, which is where the tents usually are, also falls into commercial use over there. I tried to pull the grandfather card for you guys, but I also agree that there, there was a lapse and as Attorney Swiske said, because it, because it was longer than 12 months and because it took longer, you fully admit that it, it's a, a problem regarding if it now is a commercial use. Short-term rentals don't normally come with extravagant estates. And so this one is, is definitely more difficult to determine. But I looked at home occupations. I real, I really tried, I really tried. And unfortunately, that, that doesn't include the use of land. So I ultimately, I did reach out to the other wedding venues in our town and I asked them what their process was and they did all have to go before a planning board for site review. Some of them had even certain things that were written into their approval, like no noise after 10, no fireworks, things of that nature. So.